Anybody have any objections to making that move? Okay, all right, seeing none, we'll move the agenda. Alderman Rupp, did you have something?
No, I was going to move to a crew that's amended.
Okay, all right, well, I'm going to go down the line and we'll see if there are any other changes. Alderman Carver, any changes to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Okay, other than the one specified. Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
All right, Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
I'm ready.
Alderman Sistrunk?
If there's no objection from that end of the table, I'd like to add item nine A under Mayor's Business, the consideration of giving a thirty day notice on the juvenile detention facility.
Can you tell me a little bit about that?
If you recall, about a year and a half ago, August of last year, we went into this agreement with Lounes County and we made an arrangement for them to have two beds for us on a daily basis if we were to need them. And as it turned out, after a year and a half, we've looked at the numbers. Judge Quarles has provided us information that says that we did not utilize it to the extent that we had expected or potentially could have used it. And so it doesn't make fiscal sense to do it. It also, I believe, Chief had told us in work session that it did send a message that we were serious about concerns about behavior and that there were consequences for behavior and that that, I think, has become one of the things that has made a difference in the community and some of the juvenile behavior. But we have a new judge coming in with the county court now and she will be taking that over. So for the time being, I think it would be more prudent for us from a financial perspective to let her get her feet underneath her. I've talked with supervisor, President of the Super Board of Supervisors, Trip Harston, and he has no problem with us terminating the contract and that he's willing to go back into it with us if we feel the need to do so at some time in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, so is consent okay with you for that one?
That's fine.
All right, so we'll mark that one for consent. All right, Alderman Sistrunk, anything further?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, with that, do I have a motion for approval of the official agenda with the consented items and the amendments? I have a motion from Alderman Rupp. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks? All right, no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, motion carries, thank you. And I will read the consented items. First is consideration of the amendments of the December second, twenty twenty-two work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Next is consideration of the amendments of the December sixth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. We now have, under Mayor's Business, consideration of giving a thirty day notice of termination of the interlocal agreement between Lounes County and the City of Starkville for guaranteed use of the juvenile detention center located in Lounes County. Under, next we have, under Finance Administration, we have acceptance of the November twenty twenty-two... Oh, I'm sorry, I did skip one. All right, my apologies. Board Business, item two. Reappointment of Dr. Jimmy Richardson and Dr. William Gray, the sole applicants to fill three-year terms on the airport board that will begin January second, twenty twenty-three and end January second, twenty twenty-six. Now, under Finance Administration, we have acceptance of the November twenty twenty-two financial statements. Under Human Resources, we have number one, request authorization to hire Joyner Franklin as a customer service representative in the Starkville Utilities Department. Two is request authorization to hire Gary Heisch as a water operations manager. Three is request authorization to hire Samuel Foreman as a utility locator technician. Four, request authorization to hire Oscar Moreno as a Starkville police officer. Five is request authorization to hire Cheryl Smith and Kayla Smith as radio operators, dispatchers in the Starkville Police Department. And six is request approval of the promotion of Justin Edwards to the rank of captain in the Starkville Fire Department. Under Utilities, we have request authorization to approve the proposal from Honeywell Elster for annual maintenance service and support for the AMI system as a sole source. Two is accept emergency authorization consistent with presidential determination number twenty twenty-two dash nineteen from Arkansas Electric to rebuild five transformers in the amount of five thousand five hundred and ten dollars, invoice number zero three five two nine eight-eight, and one transformer in the amount of five thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars, invoice zero three zero five two one five four. Number three is accept emergency authorization consistent with presidential determination number twenty twenty-two nineteen from Mississippi Tennessee Transformers, Inc. to purchase four pad mount transformers in the amount of thirty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. Missing a zero there. Number four is consideration of calling for two public hearings for amending section fourteen utilities of the municipal code. Five is request authorization to approve design services. Amendment number one for Kenley Horn for supplementary survey and construction engineering services for the Main and Lampkin Street Water and Sewer Infrastructure Project. Six is request authorization to approve the updated rules and regulations for Starkville Utilities pending the final review of TDA with an effective date of January one, twenty twenty-three. Seven is request authorization to accept the lowest quote from Premier Welding and Repair LLC for one thirty horsepower temporary floating airator in the amount of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And eight is request approval to accept the lowest bids received for source of supply listing for Starkville Utilities Electric Division and Water Division, January one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you. And our next item on the agenda is announcements and comments. So tonight, we have a rather auspicious evening. We have, we had a party upstairs for City Attorney Latimer. This is his last meeting with us, assuming no special call, which I'm going to assume we're not going to have, we're all going to go out for the holidays. And so I want to say how much I appreciate all the support and effort that he has put in to helping Starkville be the best we can be. He has kept us out of trouble. When we've gotten ourselves in trouble, he's gotten us out of trouble. And he has been a stalwart supporter. He has been a confidant. He has been just a real asset to the city as a whole and certainly to me personally. And I will miss him terribly. I think he's going to miss us terribly, but he won't admit that yet, so. He has his own little place on the agenda for comments for him, but I do want to say how much we appreciate what he has done for us and we need to anticipate that Burke, Mr. Burke Huskerson, where is he? There he is, out in the audience. He will be sitting up here next to me in Chris's place on January the third. And it is no reflection on him that we will miss Chris as much as we do. Yeah, I'm sure he understands that, but you will have some big shoes to fill and we know that you will serve us well. But in the interim, we will certainly miss you and thank you for everything.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, Mayor, thank you.
And also just kind of a Merry Christmas to everyone. We've got holidays coming up, so happy holidays to all. And we had an excellent, I want to commend MSU for the memorial for Coach Leach that occurred this afternoon. They did an excellent job, gave him a send-off that I think he would have been proud of. So aside from that, I don't have anything further, I don't believe. I will defer to now board members. Alderman Carver?
I love to start. I say it just in direct toward the city attorney, you know, it's been, what, fourteen going on? Fourteen years? And I'll make it short this week because I know everybody has some good comments to say, but you've never exhibited anything but in your outward demeanor and professionalism in class. I've always looked up to you, even back to the days he was on TV years and years ago. Kind of grew up watching you, I think, known you for a lot longer than fourteen years, but just I have always, as far as, as far as, in a simple way to put it, I would say if we ever deferred anything to the city attorney, he would stay between the lines and stay out of the political side of politics and he would just give his honest opinion. Sometimes we disagreed, sometimes we agreed, but respect you tremendously. I think we all wish you the best of luck and I know your wife and your daughter are here and just I know anytime you can spend more time with your family is a good thing. So we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Alderman, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Alderman Rupp?
Yeah, so when I was the news director of WCBI, Chris was an intern and...
Here comes the roast, by the way.
Yeah. All of the, all the sports guys kept saying, oh, you got to put him on the air, you got to put him on the air. And he was just out of college and he looked young and I kept saying, we are not turning this newsroom into Nickelodeon and going to stick him on the air. And they kept badgering me and so we put him on the air and he was great. He was a consummate pro and he really did a fantastic job for us and then went on to law school. So when I joined this board, he already was a city attorney. I was not going to underestimate him twice and he has been nothing but thorough, professional, classy, and it's been an honor to work with you on two different occasions. I hope I didn't run you off twice now.
It's your fault.
I know.
Thank you, Alderman.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Alderman Brooks?
I always hate to follow this guy. My, my, my history with Chris goes back to eight years of planning and zoning. Six of that I spent as the chair and I can assure you, when I sat down in that seat the first time, I didn't have a clue what I was doing. But Chris kept me out of trouble, kept the city out of trouble, you know, we, and then of course now we're being on the board. But everything, you know, I got to say what these guys have, you've just been a true professional and, you know, and not only that, you know what you're doing. And people, and the other attorneys in town know that, I was at several board meetings last night and we were discussing a cell tower that's got to be taken down at the end and Russ mentioned me, so I got to get Chris to start working on that. I said, no, not Chris. I said, Chris is not going to be there. He looked at me real funny, you know, and got all irritated because you're not going to be there because he knew that you would take care of him, so anyway. But I wish you the best of luck and we're going to miss you.
Thank you, Mike, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
Counselor, I know I've been difficult to work with sometimes, but I always appreciate your knowledge and expertise as legal counsel for City of Starkville. And also, of course, your professionalism. I always appreciate the fact that you had our City of Starkville's best interest at heart. Always looking out for our best interests. And I've always appreciated that and the working relationship I've had with you and as a personal friend and just thank the world of you and wish you the best in your endeavors going forward.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Alderman Sistrunk?
There are only so many ways to say how much we appreciate your work, your good work and I add my thoughts to those that you've heard already. I also like to say that on a personal level, I appreciate the good counsel that you gave me each time I reached out to you with a question. You helped me formalize my thoughts, helped me work my way through processes and Burke, you've got a lot of work cut out for you going forward. But I want to wish you Godspeed in your new venture and we'll boot him out anytime you decide you want to come back.
Thank you.
Sorry, Burke.
Vice Mayor Burke? Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, before I get into my comments too deep here, I would like, first of all, to recognize his, the First Lady, the wife of our city attorney and his daughter. I've just got the opportunity, the unique opportunity, the privilege and the pleasure to meet such a very gracious family who has very outstanding family values. So I would like for, if they do not mind, the city attorney does not mind, for his wife and his daughter to stand and to be recognized by the mayor and so we all can see the members of the governing body and the public and see the support system that the city attorney has.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Back on the back row, thank you.
Mayor, with that being said, I will start my comments off by saying that I've had the very close, unique privilege, pleasure and opportunity to serve and work with a man of honor, a man of distinction, a man of professionalism, a man of great wisdom, a man of great knowledge and a man of great understanding. I remember when our attorney first came to the board back on about September of two thousand and nine, that was at a time when the two, Alderman from one and seven had just come on to the board, being Alderman Carr and Alderman Vaughn. That was the first term of our former mayor, Parker Weisman. And Mr. Attorney Latimer came to us with such a high level of energy, superior knowledge base, great credentials. And he, since that date and up to this date, has served the city so honorably with such a distinction. He came to us as a young lawyer. I think he was admitted to the Mississippi Bar on about two thousand and four. And coming to the city five years after having passed the rigorous bar exam for the state of Mississippi, that is very commendable. Administrative law is not a very simple area of law. It is a very complex and a very involved area of law. At no time has Attorney Latimer been without the knowledge and expertise and a superior knowledge base of every issue, matter and thing that has come for the city. And I have personal knowledge to say that because I've been practicing law for in excess of thirty-four years now and have a lot of administrative background. I say all that to say that I just know what our attorney has done and he has such a very solid personality that has been so acceptable to the, to both of the mayors he has served with, to the men of the Aldermen he has served with, to the countless department heads, the employees and the public. And he has such a strong attachment to our city. He's always here. He enjoys working with the mayor. He enjoys working with every member of the board. He enjoys working with every department head. He enjoys working with every employee and he has such a very solid and unwavering and a very attached working relationship with everyone that he has encountered. He certainly will be greatly missed and no disrespect to the incoming city attorney, but he leaves such a very strong legacy. And whenever he's been called upon to explain matters and things and respond to inquiries, he always present the answer and explanation with very, very concise, a clear, a non-vague and a non-ambiguous response. He has responded well to the department head meetings. He has responded well in matters with the mayor, the special call meetings, the board meetings and he's responded to various litigation matters. You know, our city attorney not only come to these meetings, but he has to represent the city on all city matters and all areas that his expertise requires. And let me share this with you, and this is his night, I'm going to release the floor, but we got to give him his moment. We got to give him his flowers while he can, he can see them, he can touch them, he can hold them and he can smell them. We got to give him this moment. We're not going to rush through this. This is his night, his family travel from Lafayette County, from the city of, his lovely family. Let me share this with you. I had the occasion, the mayor knew I was going to join them at this proceeding and I just enjoyed being in the courtroom and trying cases. And the mayor and I went over to the October Hall County Circuit Court Building and it was a case that had gone up on appeal from this board and we had a former member of the Mississippi Supreme Court of the state of Mississippi and the Mississippi Court of Appeals who was the presiding justice. And I tell you, the mayor and I were there, but the City of Starkville, and not only, I just picked that one matter out, but I tell you, that was some great appellate work. And what the justice was doing, he was firing caution so strong, so consistent, so hard, that he was just testing the knowledge base of our city attorney. But the city attorney knew he had a powerful and a superior knowledge base because he did not retreat from the questions. He answered them so professionally, so well-sound, so legally correct. And of course, some of the observers thought that the, that the justice was going to rule against the city because of the questions that he raised against it. But I've been in that arena before and I knew that attorney, I said, this is one great attorney who's represented the city. He stood his ground, he was very solid, he was very strong, he was very brilliant, he was very well-prepared and that's the key. And he had a very superior knowledge base. And ladies and gentlemen, at the end of the day, the justice from, the Supreme Court Justice from Choctaw County who had the case, he was very solid and he, before the sun set that evening, it was clear that he ruled for the City of Starkville. But with all that being said, a city attorney and I have spent a lot of hours together. I look at him not only as a city attorney, but a great professional, a great friend. And our relationship is not going to end here. I understand that, you know, when opportunities arise, you have to look at the totality of the facts and the circumstances. I'm not going to be selfish about it, Mr. Reporter. I want him to do what is best for him and his family. Our relationship is going to continue. The City of Starkville has been richly blessed. We've been greatly blessed. We are a better city, we are a better board and I just know that his next destination, he's going to be continuously powerful. He's going to continue to deliver so succinctly and speak so well with his English language, how he articulates that and just, you know, it just requires a very superior knowledge base on everything he does. So attorney, you know, the Vice Mayor's not had the floor this long in a long time, but, but you know, it's your day. I mean, and I understand, and I knew before I got here, I had to take this time, Ms. Harden, because I want to make sure this is your day and no need me to wait until call you on the telephone and tell you that.
Thank you, Vice.
And you deserve that, you earned it, you have the right to hear that. So, you know, I'm not going to leave here because I won't feel comfortable if I don't say everything I need to say, but you've done a great job and you continue to do well and you're going to continuously be blessed in all of your endeavors and no question about it. And I'm going to miss you also, not only as a Vice Mayor and Alderman, but as a member of the bar. You're a great asset to the bar. And so attorney, well done. You've been an excellent servant for our city and we appreciate you. You have a great family and we pray that God will continue to bless you in all your endeavors. And Mayor, thank you for the time, thank you.
Absolutely, well said, beautifully said.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, means a lot, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
Well, first of all, he probably one of the sharpest attorneys I ever seen. And when he come through that door, he well dressed. And wherever we went and wherever we had go and he was there, he represented the City of Starkville well, well dressed. And he had the best interest of Starkville at heart. Chris and I came on the board just about together, I was here a little time before he was. But Chris remind me so much of Michael Six and Eight, do justly. And Chris did justly for us and for the people of Starkville. I know a lot of them sometimes didn't like his decision, but it was a just decision. And he loved mercy. Chris had mercy on all of us and the City of Starkville, Chris was a great attorney. Like Vice Mayor said, we are better with Chris leading us. We are much better, we are much stronger now. And lastly, Chris walked with the God, I believe. He walked with the God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. Because some of the things that Chris done, he couldn't have done them on his own. He had to have the God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob with him. Chris, you know, I love you. I'm going to miss you so much, so much. But I still have your phone number.
You did, don't lose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. All right, normally we do not have city attorney comments, but in deference to Mr. Latimer, we have given him his own space this evening on the agenda. So, Mr. Latimer?
If you don't mind, I'll go to the podium just so I can look everybody in the eye. This has become a very special night, one that I did not fully anticipate would evolve like this. I appreciate all of your remarks, they just mean the world to me. And I know that our time is precious tonight and there's important business to conduct after this, so let me just dive right in. You know, as we've worked in this building and as our Crackerjack IT Director Joel Clements has given us these dynamite key fobs to get in and out of the back door, oftentimes when I do that, listen to the kids playing in the first Methodist playground right back there because in nineteen seventy-seven and in nineteen seventy-eight, I was one of those kids playing on that playground. So there could be a city attorney out there playing or the next mayor or the next alderman the next time y'all go out the back door and hear them playing. Also, growing up in Starkville, I've talked to Alderman Sistrunk about this. When she talks about, well, who owns this piece of land next to Long Meadow? What are we going to do about this ditch? We talk about me playing in that ditch and how we would ride our bikes down that ditch when a rainstorm would come and the current would carry our bikes like boats and we would just sail all the way into McKee Park. Growing up in the late seventies in Starkville and the early eighties in Starkville was really like a Tom Sawyer existence. Christmas holidays, summer vacation, I would wake up at the light of day and I would get on my bike and I would go. And you would just find whatever game was going on, whatever adventure was going on. You would ride your bike to Mississippi State, you'd play ping pong at the ten gym, you'd bowl in the basement of the union, all kinds of things that you can't necessarily do now. And you'd be gone all day. And at some point during the day, somebody's mama would feed you and then when it was about dark thirty, I'd ride my bike back home. And of course, all this was before cell phones and before Life 360 and all the modern conveniences that we had. And so my mom, she had no idea where I was during all that time of the day, but it didn't matter because the community took care of me. And in addition to my family, I believe that the City of Starkville has helped raise me. So it has been the highlight of my professional life to be able to serve you guys as city attorney for the better part of fourteen years. And I just wanted to thank you and say a couple of words about each of you as I close out tonight. First, I want to address the four people who hired me back in August of two thousand and nine. And those four people, I'll just go down the line, were Alderman Vaughn, Vice Mayor Perkins, Alderman Sistrunk and Alderman Carver. First, Alderman Vaughn. I admire your lifetime dedication and impact on the City of Starkville in all kinds of ways. When Alderman Vaughn makes decisions, my observation is two things are always on his mind. One is, does it benefit all the citizens of Starkville? Not just citizens in any particular ward. And number two, does it benefit the city's workforce? Because you always have a heart for the workforce, given your industrial and manufacturing background. I admire that so much and I appreciate your deep faith and your personal ministry to my family. Many of you know that Alderman Vaughn's a cancer survivor and he keeps a list of other people who have had cancer. And about ten years ago, my mom came down with cancer and my mom got on Alderman Vaughn's list. And Alderman Vaughn prays for these people every single day of his life and the list is a hundred people long. And so Alderman Vaughn has prayed for my mother three hundred and sixty-five days a year for ten days straight and never ceases to ask about it. And I just want to thank you for that so very much. And recently, he sends out this text chain with a word of encouragement and I send it immediately to my daughter. So Alderman Vaughn has ministered to my mother and he's ministered to my daughter. And I just appreciate you taking care of my family, ma'am. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Perkins. When I interviewed with the board in late summer of two thousand and nine, you guys then went into executive session and I wasn't in the room at the time, but I heard a little bit about some of the discussion. And I think it was Alderman Sistrunk who said, I don't know, he's only five years out of law school. He's pretty green, he doesn't know a lick of municipal law. And I'm told that Vice Mayor Perkins said, I've got him. I won't let him fail. And it's been that way for fourteen years. Vice Mayor Perkins has had my back and he's had me and he hadn't let me fail. And I just want to thank you for all your wisdom, all your encouragement, all your insights, all our time on the phone. You've just blown wind behind my sail every step of the way and I want to thank you so very much for that. When I think about Alderman Sistrunk, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Perkins, Vice Mayor, I admire your keen intellect, I admire your uncanny memory. You can ask Vice Mayor when the board did something and he'll say, oh, that was January in two thousand and two, even if it was twenty years ago. I admire your ability to see multiple steps down the field, to predict what's going to happen next. And I admire your longevity and experience, eight terms, it's unprecedented. Thank you for our relationship and it's been my pleasure to serve with you. Alderman Sistrunk, what we all know, but what needs to be highlighted is you're so good, you could work anywhere you wanted to. You could work in any accounting firm in the southeast or in the country and yet you choose to serve the City of Starkville as its budget chair. And you choose to do that high level of work and you do most of that work for free if you would kind of extrapolate out your rate. I admire your technical ability, your sharp and uncanny political skills, your over and above dedication for the city and your extremely good knowledge of Mississippi State and SEC sports. And I've enjoyed our lunches at Restaurant Tyler very much, really enjoyed serving with you. Alderman Carver, I admire your convictions. I've always watched you vote your conscience, I've always watched you vote your constituency. And as you know, sometimes you stand alone in your vote and that's okay and you never take it personally and you're always professional and politics doesn't work that way much these days. And you're kind of an old-school statesman in that regard, that you stand your ground, but you're collegial with your peers and that's just so much to be admired. Keep doing what you're doing, keep doing good work in that seat or whatever other seats you may obtain in the future. It's been my pleasure to serve with you. Before moving to the newer aldermen, I want to jump in with the mayor... Before moving to the newer Alderman, I want to jump in with the Mayor in the middle. Mayor, I told you this, if I was to draft a starting five in Mississippi, you were my first pick in the draft. I have never known anybody in my life who can get things done like you, who can move the ball down the field. It's been such a pleasure working with you. I have very much enjoyed all of our conversations, especially our direct and candid conversations. There was a time in the annexation case where John Hill pulled me aside, and he said, you and the mayor always talk to each other this way? I said, yeah, that's how we do it. We have what we call locker room conversations, where we bat the tennis ball back and forth across the net, and we argue and scrap on issues, and then we come out as a united front and never look back. It's such a joy and such a pleasure. I admire your energy and your force of will and your innate sense of fairness. It's just been my pleasure to work with you. Alderman Betty, I admire your passion. I admire your willingness to question authority. I admire your willingness to play devil's advocate sometimes. I admire your willingness to encourage pumping the brakes when the locomotive gets going pretty fast. And like Alderman Carver, I admire your fearlessness to stand alone sometimes on a vote. It's been a real pleasure getting to know you and working with you, and you provide a big impact with this board. Keep on doing what you do. My time with Alderman Brooks does go back to the P&amp;Z, which is a great training ground for an Alderman. And I've seen Alderman Brooks grow as a P&amp;Z Commission Member, and then as the P&amp;Z Commission Chair, and now as an Alderman. And when I think about Alderman Brooks, I think about attention to detail. I think about an even keel. I think about just a fundamental fairness. And I think about practical thinking and practical problem solving. How do you resolve an issue? You hit the ball out of the park on all those traits, and it's just been my pleasure working with you. Alderman Ruff is right. When I first started work at WCBI, I was 21 slash 22 years old, and Jeffrey joked that I could still eat free at Shoney's, because I looked 12. And Jeffrey, you were instrumental at that time in helping me figure out how to be a professional. You gave me grace and mercy and latitude to make mistakes and not have those be career killers. And had I not worked for you, I know I would have never gone to law school, and I know I would have never gone to Georgia Law School, because I know for a fact I put some WCBI stuff in my application package that people liked, and I would have never been the City Attorney. So you just have been instrumental in my professional development, and I can't thank you enough. It's been my pleasure to serve with you. When I took the City Attorney job, another City Attorney in the state told me, Chris, what you don't know yet is the impact the department heads will have on you. And he said, what you'll learn is that they are extremely high-level professionals, that they do outstanding work on a daily basis, often with short resources, that they're always seeking the best for the citizens of Starkville. And he said, you will call these people your colleagues, and most importantly, you will call these people your friends. And I will say with 100% certainty, that's been the case with the department heads for the city of Starkville, many of whom are on the back row and the back left corner of the room back there. It's been my ultimate pleasure to work with you guys on a daily basis. The city of Starkville has a staff meeting, as y'all know, every Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. And I'm not contractually obligated to attend, but I just attend because I like being in the room. I like being a part of this team that's sitting back there. Starkville is in such good hands with its department heads, and I've enjoyed serving with them. So in closing, thank you for the opportunity to serve. I look forward to visiting a whole bunch. I look forward to seeing Burke improve on my role. I'm proud of where Starkville's been. I was just thinking, you know, the Mill Project, this new building at City Hall, the new police station, the industrial park, annexation, massive infrastructure improvements all over town. And yet I think Starkville's best days are ahead. The projects that are underway right now, the Main Street Project, Cornerstone Park, Highway 182 build grant, the Parks Project, Starkville remains well-positioned, and particularly well-positioned, to remain and be a frontline city in the SEC, which is its rightful place. So again, we're going to get down to business after this. Thank you so, so very much for the opportunity.
We appreciate that you indulged us as we said farewell, at least an early farewell, to Mr. Latimer. Now, we're going to, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into closed session to determine the need for executive session here in a moment, but let me say to those of you in the audience, we're going to have an item on the agenda that is not a public hearing, as in the public was not allowed to come up and speak, but you do have the opportunity during Citizens' Comments to come up and speak at that point in time. So we will be taking up Citizens' Comments after we come out of the closed session or the executive session, whatever the board determines it wants to do. So as it stands right now, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
No.
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Carver. All right. No discussion. All those in favor who signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. We will go into closed session to determine the need for executive session. If everyone could clear the room, please.
The Board took no action in executive session, so we will move forward with citizens' comments. And as I mentioned before, let me refresh your memory, the item on the agenda that I believe a number of you are here for is not going to be a public hearing in the sense that it is not going to be an offer, an opportunity for the public to address it. So now would be the time under citizens' comments to address any issue that's currently on the agenda if you're so inclined. So, citizens' comments, I will now open it for citizens' comments. And Mr. Turner, I see you making your way to us.
All right, good evening, my name is Alvin Turner, Y7, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief, to the sound technician. Several concerns. Number one is that we have all our bills coming in on time except the electric bill. And it has people freaked out because we cannot do anything because we don't know how much our electric bill is. Coming in at the end of the month, middle of the month, people on fixed incomes, and as I told you at the last meeting, we have a belief that we cannot let our utilities be cut off by any means. Also, to the police department, we have gotten some young people that's poking through the neighborhood wearing hoods, and we would like for the police officers to make a circle to try to deter any kind of action that the young people, they're not going to school, but they're just looking for something to get into. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Merry Christmas. All right, anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' comments? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close it as citizens' comments. The next item on the agenda is under board business, and it is interviews of two applicants in discussion for the filling of an appointment from a three-year term that will begin January the first, 2023, and then January the second, 2026, with Starkville Housing Authority. We have one applicant who is a currently serving applicant, and then we have another one who is interested in that position. Both those applicants with us this evening. Miss Ma'am, we have, all right, the other gentleman is with us. So this would be the Board's pleasure. If you'd like to come forward, we'll just take one at a time, if you would, if you'd like to come forward and talk to us about your, about your interest in continuing in that position, that'd be great. Thank you. Can you introduce yourself, please, Ma'am?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Carla Williams. I am a native of Starkville, Mississippi. I've been here my entire life. I've been here my entire life. Graduate of Starkville High School and two-time alum of Mississippi State University. I presently teach school for the Starkville, October Hall County School District. I teach history at the Learning Center. I moved to the high school during the COVID year, and I moved back to the Learning Center afterwards, so, 22 years.
Yes, ma'am. And how long have you been on the Housing Authority Board?
I extended out a term from someone else who was serving, so about four years.
Okay, approximately four years. Any, any questions from the Board?
Why do you wish to continue serving?
I wish to continue, continue serving, to continue doing some of the jobs that we have. I've been there, we have just had inspection with HUD, which we passed, the React inspection. We travel to, we have different housing tenants from Reed Road to Pecan Acres, so we were there to prepare the residents on how to keep their dwelling in place and in order, in order for us to continue our funding from HUD, so they will have a place to stay. Also, with me teaching in the school district, I come across several students that live in Housing Authority, and not only do they see, their parents see me as serving as a commissioner on the Board, but the students feel as if they have a connection with me when something go on, even if it's as far as tutoring, needing a haircut, they feel a connection that I can help them out, so that's why I would like to continue serving.
Anyone else? Anything else? Alderman?
Being the liaison for the Housing Authority, I appreciate the job that you are doing, that you all are doing over there. Like you say, y'all have a lot of things that state, and y'all have accomplished a lot, and I appreciate the job that you've been doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other projects that y'all are working on?
We, well, of course, you know, we have the, the bridge that we are trying to get organized and work on. We just completed the roofing, we're doing doors, we're getting some of the things that we did not score well enough on to up to par, so they can have a better way of life.
And y'all get, y'all get inspected every year?
No, it's just like, this was my first inspection, so every like five years or so, just kind of like when they call your number.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll ask the other applicant to come forward.
Hello?
If you'd introduce yourself, please, and tell us why you're interested.
Absolutely, so, Mr. Madam Mayor, Mr. City Attorney, members of the Board of Alderman, my name's Angel Anthony Rios. I've been a native of Starkville for probably about three and a half years now. My interest with the Housing Authority largely stems from the fact that I bring a significant amount of policy and industry experience to the possibility of filling the role on the Board. I absolutely appreciate the incumbent commissioner's work and her service, not only as a school teacher and a public educator, but also as a member of the Board. I definitely look at the Commission and the Board of Alderman, and I realize the difficulty of public service. I'm a native of California. I came to Mississippi about three, like I said, about three and a half years ago after studying a significant amount of different municipalities that I could come to, and I chose Starkville out of all of the different ones that I could possibly find. I was speaking to someone in the gallery while all of you were in executive session, and I faced a question that I've faced multiple times since I've come here, which was, why did you choose Starkville, and specifically, why did you choose Mississippi, coming from California? And it's a concerning one for me, mostly because as an individual of my age, I face that question significantly from a lot of people who share my age bracket. Individuals like that seek to leave the state and the city, and they are public investments, and it is a brain drain that individuals are taking public money and going across state lines to enrich the economies of other states. As an individual who has specifically been a beneficiary of public housing, I grew up in an extremely low-income neighborhood and had to fight the systemic inefficiencies and inaccuracies of public housing in the county of Los Angeles every single day while I was growing up. I had to see the effect that it had on my family and on the effect that it had on my fellow members of the community. I've seen the effect that the lack of resources that the Housing Authority has to deal with, and the confusion that it also has to deal with in dealing with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. I bring significant experience with Washington, and then also knowledge of the state in dealing with matters pertaining to housing policy. While I, during the pandemic, so between the years of 2019 and 2021, I worked as a program coordinator for the Inland SoCal United Way, wherein I helped administer one of the largest county-based public housing assistance and rental retention programs in the entire country. It was a multimillion-dollar program in which I personally dealt with a caseload of around 300 applicants and had to work to keep these people in their homes, and then to also administer the county's work as, as it pertained to public housing and public housing policy. So my interest is largely systemic, institutional, and then also from an advocate's perspective in the sense that I would like to continue the work of the Commission, but also improve upon it, not only for the good of the Starkville community, but also for the good of the entirety of the county of October Hall and the state of Mississippi. So I welcome any questions you might have, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Rios? Ben?
Just listening to you, I was gonna say, from a rental retention standpoint, what do you think are one of the issues people have from, you know, sustainable housing long-term? Is it, is it education, or is it systemic system, or what are your thoughts on that?
Well, large, and I thank you, Alderman Carter, for your question. I think largely it's holistic. I think from a policy perspective, many elected officials sometimes forget that the smaller pieces of the picture that come with policymaking have to all fit together. So education feeds into rental assist, rental retention feeds into quality of public housing. If individuals can't get their hands on quality public education, or the economic opportunities to societally move up, or maintain their own independence, then they are less likely to not only stay in the areas in which they're not able to receive that economic opportunity or that quality education for themselves or for their children or their family members, but they're also more likely to feed into negative societal interactions like crime and like homelessness.
And I'll tell you this, we say this to each and every person that applies, and we don't, we haven't talked about this at all, so I don't know how the vote will go, but I just encourage you to, to stay active in the community, and we appreciate you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions? Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate it, and truly, you know, it's hard to find applicants to apply for, for things, and so we're very grateful, however this vote goes, we're very grateful for those who are willing to serve, so thank you so much.
Of course, thank you all.
Okay. All right. We're going to need a motion.
Move approval to maintain the applicant that we already have restored for.
So, Ms. Carla Williams?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
I heard a second from Alderman Sistrum. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you again for your application, we appreciate that you're interested in serving, and there are other, there are other positions that have come available in the city, so thank you, and congratulations, thank you for your service as well. All right, next item on the agenda is going to be, we have a, no, we have a, okay, here's, it's, I'm sorry, it's the next one. Consideration of AA 22-02, request for administrative appeal of the decision to deny the use of a home occupation for 400 Greensboro Street. Mr. Havelin is not with us, but he has left us with a video, so if someone, there we go, all right. So this would be Mr. Havelin presenting his position as the city representative regarding this particular.
Let the applicant go first, the appealed applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, well, in that case, never mind. I'm used to the city doing stuff first.
Not this case.
Not this time, all right, well, there you go. All right, so Mr. Starks, let me pivot over here to you. All right, so the applicant is providing us his request for reconsideration or consideration of Daniel's denial, Mr. Havelin's denial of the resident's home occupation, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'll take your honor, that's okay. No, I'm.
Old Havers side over.
Yeah, I understand, well, this, this different venue, so, all right, so you have 15 minutes, and if you wish to, this will be mirroring P and Z, if you wish to save some time for rebuttals, certainly you may do so.
Yes, ma'am, I've got a couple handouts that I would like to provide.
Okay, that Chief Ballard will help do that. Yes, you may, and Ms. Harden will be the timing.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Starks, thank you.
Thank you. On July 1st, 2022, Will and Stephanie Arnett and really Stephanie emailed City Planner Daniel Havelin, inquiring about the use exception and the process for that for the home at 400 Greensboro Street. She had entered into a contract purchased, or was about to, with a contingency of if she could get that approved by the city, then she would purchase the property. That was July 1st, no response was received. In that email, Mr. Havelin admits that she did say it was the second home, is what the intended purpose was, with an office portion upstairs. On July 28th, 2022, she sent a follow-up email, still regarding the use exception, not a home occupation permit, which is what we're here about today. Sent back saying, well, it sounds like you have a home occupancy issue, situation where you can just be issued a permit. And he calls it home occupancy, under the code it is home occupation permit, just to make sure the terms are correct. On August 3rd, or August 2nd and 3rd, Ms. Arnett filed her application, it was approved by the City of Starkville. She then removed the contingency on the contract to purchase the home. Then scheduled closing on August 10th, on August 16th, she purchased and closed on the home. On August 17th, email from city planner stating, it has come to your, our attention that you will not be living in the home, and the approval is only valid if you live in the home. Well, she asked, what can I do to satisfy those criteria for primary residents, is what she gathered through additional correspondence between the mayor's office and the city planner. Response was, you need to live there. Doesn't define or provide any standards, and the parties kind of disagree as to the definition or criteria for residing there, and that's what this is all about. The issue is the interpretation of the Unified Development Code, and it requires that it be by a person residing on the premises of a residential dwelling. I've read through the 400 pages, and not once does it say primary residence. Not once, in relation to a home occupation permit. But that's what's being said. Now Ms. Arnett, in all candor, has two homes inside the city of Starkville. She has made one home occupation permit, application for one of those, not for both. She considers herself living at both and residing at both. Since the term living is not in the code either, I want to use reside and residing. So the interpretation of the UDC, well, how do we get that interpretation? Well, Mr. Havelin said at the last meeting, he wrote it, he's the ultimate authority on it. Well, the UDC says you all are the ultimate authority on it. You're the elected officials, the UDC is to serve the citizens out here, and that live in this town, not to serve Mr. Havelin. We talked about professionalism tonight, and I've heard that, and I know Mr. Latimer and I wholeheartedly agree with all those comments about him, but I haven't seen that same level of professionalism in your city planner. What I have seen is him say in written comments, Ms. Arnett willfully and blindly ignored those requirements for the home occupation permit. Well, included in your package is a copy of the application that she filed, and a copy of the requirements behind it. Now, for some reason, when I printed it off, the numeral two, where it says number of employees, is missing. I don't know why it printed out that way, but in the packet, it had the numeral two He doesn't say what any of those requirements are that she blindly ignored, not once. He does say, once I became aware through phone calls and in-person conversations that the only use of the property is a real estate office, I emailed Ms. Arnett, presumably on August 17th, because that's the email she received. Well, he doesn't say who he spoke to. Imagine a building permit issued by the city, somebody saying, hey, we're canceling that building permit because somebody called and said, you're not building what you told us you were gonna build, and not ever coming to the site, not ever checking the plans, not ever talking to the developer. Imagine that. I can't imagine anything more arbitrary and capricious. And so founded on insubstantial and insufficient evidence. Now, he's basically calling Ms. Arnett a liar. She blindly ignored the requirements. Well, that's not true. She just had a different interpretation of the requirements than he did. When it said residing, she bought the house she intended to use the first floor for residential purposes. Cooking, cleaning, sitting on the couch, playing pool, did substantial renovations to the house in her application. Said 862 feet, which is exactly 20%, she actually only used 707, which is two upstairs rooms that would be used as office space if approved. Well, on August 24th, the application status was marked as denied. Right there, your inquiry stops, as this board. Criteria for administrative appeal review and approval in 3.81, you consider it de novo, but shall not consider new evidence that was not available to city staff at the time of making an interpretation. So his interpretation at that time was that it had to be a primary residence. His application of it is the second part of that. His application of it was that it was not Ms. Arnett's primary residence. We're gonna differ on both points. But number one, you as the Board of Alderman get to make the decision for the city, you're elected. And you may have heard, a lot of political winds have been blown by the residents of Greensboro, I've seen comments from all over town, for and against, there are hundreds of people that support Ms. Arnett, probably hundreds that don't, some are louder than others, but all those. Some are louder than others, but all those live throughout your city. And one of the things that, in making policy, which you're a policymaking board, is you've got to set certain standards so that citizens can make rational decisions based on neutral and predictable standards. Not on, "Oh, I talked to Joe, and he said this," and not ever investigating it. No code enforcement officer ever came to visit before August twenty-four, not one. Then they came without a warrant, that, but we'll talk about that later, but that's the... And went in the house two and a half hours. But let's talk about the interpretation of the Unified Development Code residing on the premises. Mr. Havillan's staff report mentions not one word about it. He finally gets to it at the end, in his presentation comments, "I know there's a lot being said about the definition of the word reside as used. They're four hundred pages long, it'd be impractical to include every term. When I wrote the code, a provision was included for the interpretation of words. Ultimately, I have the authority, as the City Planner, to find the word in the context that is being used." He said he may use some of the resources that are listed in the UDC, he didn't use any of them. Black's Law Dictionary, the Complete Illustrated Guide to Development Definitions. Didn't, didn't seek to look at any of those resources, none. This is, I know it when I see it. Legislation from an administrative position. Now... And it sounds like it's dependent upon political winds, because we know he was having conversations with people, because he admits that. I know he's emailing some of the Aldermen on this board. Information about it. But he ends up denying it, and so the question comes, is, "How do we interpret it?" Well, residing on the premises, if you own two homes, you reside in both places, you have both. Well, Stephanie believed from day one that she qualified under residing on the premises of a residential dwelling, because the house is exactly the same as it was, except it's been improved greatly by their investment in this town, in the city. Now, his denial was based solely on his opinion that she didn't live there, based on this hearsay he had received, not by any investigation of his own. Now, they own two houses in Starkville, they live in both, they consider both their residences, and they have a good fake dispute over what residing means under your UDC, because it's not defined. If this were a restrictive covenant, the law is very clear in Mississippi. If it was a restrictive covenant that says, "You can't do something if it's not clearly defined, the free use of the property is the default position that the court takes." Mississippi has very strong property rights laws and constitutional provisions. The free use of your property, unless it's prohibited, is default, and should be what, should be favored. Now, once he did say, "Oh, well, it's got to be your primary residence, you have to live there," what criteria did he use? How many nights does she have to sleep there for it to be her primary residence? Well, when he, when she asked that question, it was, "You just have to live there. You just have to live there. You just have to live there." That's it. That's not an answer. Those are ill-defined restrictions, such as preserving the neighborhood character. What does that mean? You can't define it, and I can't either. Now, Stephanie has done a lot of things to try to make it a primary residence. She's registered to vote there, she's registered her car there, she's got her license there, she gets her mail there, she spends most of her time there, which is what most objective factors show as being your primary residence, is where do you spend your time? When you spend it there, that's where your primary residence is.
Mr. Stark, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Last, you reverse the decision, the City Planner, I reserve the two minutes.
Thank you. All right, next it's us, there's the city. All right, so we have Mr. Havillan, who is queued up on the screen here, and we can go ahead, I presume, and just let him...
Please, please go. I'm going to give back due time. It detailed showed the staff report. It said, "I know that there was a process for approval, did not, my role to the City Planner. The first email I got did not permit a use of the property for that first. I received that email on vacation, did not collect any of the free email later, or responded to email. Ms. Arnett did prefer to be used as a second move with office space on the second floor in that email. I received the second email on July twenty-eighth. Ms. Arnett preferred to use, as it presented to me, using the third floor, compared to office space on the second floor. In that email, Ms. Arnett preferred the property that is done moving several times. Therefore, in my response, I'm going to state that Ms. Arnett, the people who gave that note, and working out the homeowners of the second floor. Under that assumption, I recommend applying for home occupancy and not a use exception. I emailed Ms. Arnett on August second with the decision that it would require us of home occupation. At this point, Ms. Arnett had all the files for home occupation to review and see if her proposed use met those requirements. Ms. Arnett responded back to that email and stated that she would submit an application. She did submit an application, and on that application, she did check my T S, as said she had the requirements for home occupation, section thirteen, with five foot down. In fact, on back to that application, all the requirements for home occupation were game listed. Ms. Arnett willfully and blindly ignored those requirements. Once I became aware through phone calls and in-person conversations that the only use of the property is a real estate office, I emailed Ms. Arnett. In that email, I cited the definition of home occupancy and informed her she would apply for a use exception, not operate at that location. On August twenty-four, the application status changed to deny in my... Ms. Arnett individually blocked her use exception on August twenty-sixth. That application was pulled by the advocate, a few hours afterward, we reviewed by the board of officers on October eighteen. Before the use exception was reviewed by the planning and zoning commission, Ms. Arnett again applied for home occupancy at four hundred three. Again, it was denied based on criteria before home occupancy sessions thirteen, with five foot down. And I know that the blocking said about the definition of the word reside as used in the definition of home occupancy. The Unified Development Code printed out, this is a quarter-page law. It would be a right of ownership to every term used in the UDC in the definition section. A lot of characters are plain even for common knowledge. Therefore, when I read the document, a provision was included, we gave a patient words. In that provision is, it was several work resources that may be used in a final order, the key word is "may." Ultimately, I did inform the City Planner, in the final order, in the context of it being used, in this context, is being used to discuss a home office, a residential structure, and a residential subdivision. The home occupation use is listed under residential uses in section thirteen of the UDC, not under permissions. Office professional is, however, listed under permissions. There is a conventional after all professional use in that subdivision. That division is the use exception process, which was started and stopped by the advocates. First definition, home occupancy is supposed to be clearly incidental, secondary to the use of the residential dwelling, which does not change a regular dwelling or neighborhood, in which brings the school additional traffic and few visitors to the premises. Therefore, in my professional opinion, not only as the City Planner, but as the author of the Unified Development Code, I strongly recommend denying this request to a pure home occupancy denied or request for home occupancy at four hundred three, based on the requirements in section thirteen, with five foot down. Otherwise, as we get a leak in the renovation zoning regulations, it would offer no protection in any residential structure, in any residential zoning district, or in compatible permanent uses of the neighborhood. One thing I also want to clear up about home occupancy requires is that it doesn't shift include homeowners, people who are already tenants, may also apply for home occupation to run their own office. If this deal is approved, any residential property located in any residential subdivision anywhere in the city could be regarded as rental property. For example, a house with a rent of seven could be rented out by a local doctor and converted to a medical plant. An apartment unit named West Main Gardens could be used as a parking lot. As far as that as it may sound, this is exactly what the Arnett joint did. The only difference between their request and those areas is nobody being... At the planning and zoning commission meeting, it is revolved, Mr. Stark stated that I included information gathered after the denial of the application. He correctly cited sections three point eight, one C, which states that when reviewing the decision of the sixth act, evidence shall not be available to the city statute, and the common shall not be considered. Information gathered after August twenty-four, twenty twenty-two was included as that report, as a direct response to Mr. Stark including information gathered after August twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. Exhibit eighty-nine and ten were either created or generated after August twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Stark also recommends that he have a home owner left, which is correct, and incorrectly use it as support's claim. The other question, Mr. Stark, is how many months someone needs to spend to work to live? The question of residing or living there should be viewed in context of home occupation. The terrible home occupation is to allow someone to operate, handle office out of their home. The application of that is used for proceedings for injuries and tax, taxes are not applicable to this situation. The planning and common language should be applied, but the people can answer the question of where do you live without referencing incompatible case law. I think that Ms. Arnett said that as her own document, Mr. Stark has a right, that document states, quote, "Will you be living in the home? According to our models, no, we learn it's down to the street also."
Okay. Mr. McCaskey, you don't have anything to add to that?
No, Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Starks, for your rebuttal?
Well, again, this board has to look at just what the city staff had at the time of denial. He didn't have that for pressure thing, and that was submitted for a use exception, because it was a totally different standard. He's conflating the two. Now... There are two questions that you have. One is, first, does it only include primary residence? If it does, fine, you make that call, you make that decision, you make that interpretation. I would suggest you put it in the code. Needs to be there, needs to be in black and white, so citizens know, that they don't go invest five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars and get stuck with a house that they can't use for the intended purpose that was permitted by the city before they bought it. And second, if you do say, "Yes, this is a primary residence only," then tell us what those criteria are, define what a primary residence is. You heard him just say, "It's just what common sense is." Well, common sense is what anybody says it is, or what he says it is in this case. It's arbitrary, it's a whim, it's capricious, depends on who's asking, depends on who's against it. Doesn't provide good guidance and policy to somebody, to say, "These are the criteria." That is not the kind of policy that the city needs in order to proceed with having clear guidance. Ms. Arnett wants to comply with whatever requirements are, she just needs to know what they are. I have a feeling that he will never find that she's in compliance, because his ego and his personality's gotten involved now. His decision's at stake, I have to back it up. And I know he works for y'all, and he works for the citizens of Starkville. And I would ask that you reverse that based on your public policy and your decision-making as this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starks. Okay, the board will go into deliberation at this point in time. Do we have any thoughts or questions of either Mr. Stark, he's obviously still here, and anything that we can extrapolate from Mr. Dan, from Mr. Havillan's presentation, or Mr. McCaskey would, would do his best to assist in that, having worked with Mr. Havillan on this at some point, so, any thoughts? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Actually, oh, Mr. Stark. I, I do have a, a question, and just a bit of clarification. Mr. Starks, you, you said that when this particular document printed out, the number of employees didn't print out, and it is in fact blank on there, and you said that the answer is two?
That was the answer that was in the packet I received from the city, yes.
Was, was two, and, and how many employees does Mississippi Magnolia have, Ms. Arnett have?
Well, the, and I'll do a little explanation there, the question was asking, how many employees do they have? They have, I think, two full-time and two part-time employees. There are some independent contractors that are affiliated with them that aren't employees, but, but those are, but on-site employees was the requirement under the standards, how many would be on-site at any given time, is the way we took that question. So the answer was two would be on-site at any given time.
But, but they're...
Because it allows for two on-site, two outside employees to be on-site at any time.
So, so they're, they're clearly more than two people that are members of the team. Okay, that, that, that was my, I just wanted to be sure.
But the intention was that there would only be two on-site at any given time, yes.
Anything else, Mr. Stark?
What, yes, I, I would say that Mr. Starks suggested that it's our duty as the board to be a policymaking group, and to make a decision based on policy. And I'm, I'm a big decision tree person, so you start with that question at the top of the decision tree, try not to get distracted by, by future questions, but, but hit that first decision, and then that can inform future decisions. And I think that the decision tree for us is a determination of whether or not we agree with Daniel's interpretation of, of residency, and whether we think that is reasonable. I think that's the policy that sits before us tonight to make a determination about. And so, that, that I think is what our votes would be cast on. I think that Daniel has a very valid concern that to allow this particular use in this particular property does open up the door to commercial use in residential areas in ways that we have not anticipated as we established our zoning processes throughout the city. So I would just, I would just say that I, I agree that this is a policy decision, and, and I don't want us to get too bottom-down in other things. The, the first question, and the one I think that informs our decision tonight, is whether or not we agree with Daniel's interpretation as, as a reasonable interpretation of residency. And having said that, I do agree with Daniel's interpretation, and I move that we, do we have a motion, or does somebody else have something?
Well, if you make...
You make the motion first.
Yeah, if you make the motion first, I'll get second, then we can go to further discussion.
I'm, I'm, I'm moved that we support Mr. Havillan's recommendation and deny the use of a home occupation for four hundred Greensboro Street.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Oliver Carver, all right. Okay, now, discussion, Oliver Bay.
Oh, Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Do the Arnettes own another residence in Starkville?
They do, yes.
Which is their primary residence? Where are they hanging right now, what's their primary residence? That was an insurance agent, people have primary residences, and they have second, secondary residences, and there's a rate, yeah, when you rate this kind of stuff, the best rate is on, on the primary residence, so they have a primary residence, where is their primary residence?
Well, Stephanie's is at four hundred Greensboro, Will's is at two nine Willow Bend.
Are they married?
They are married.
So they split up, and they're, they're two different residences?
Well, they're together sometimes, and they're not together sometimes, so.
I don't know, I'm just saying, I just know your point, man. They have a primary residence.
I mean, they're happily married, as far as I know, I don't want any rumors.
I'm just saying, they have a primary residence and they have a secondary residence. And which, in your opinion, would be their primary residence?
Well, if you look at objective criteria, I think Stephanie has her voter registration at four hundred Greensboro, she has her license there, she receives mail there, she spends most of her time there. For Will, his voter registration's at two nine Willow Bend, so I would say his primary residence is there. It is... But that said, uh, I will support not only, uh, Mr. Haviland, but also the unanimous recommendation of the planning commissioner.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Brooks?
Just, just one thing. Mr. Stark mentioned Black's Law Dictionary, you know, about definition of residence, and the, and I'm reading, living, or dwelling in a certain way permanently, you know, for a considerable length of time. And I think that's, I believe that is probably where Mr. Haviland is hanging his hat, is on that particular definition. And, you know, we've put him in this position to, uh, to interpret the code, and as, you know, mentioned earlier tonight, I've been planning the zoning for a number of years, and we were going through that code. And, uh, and I know how much, I know how difficult it was for us to, to completely rework anything, so, you know, the fact that there's maybe not the actual definition of, uh, in there, uh, you know, I understand that. And, uh, again, I think we give Mr. Haviland the, uh, I mean, that's part of his position is to make those, those calls, and, uh, you know, as one that's supported him through a lot of, of, you know, working on the code and other things, I'm going to have to support him in this instance, too.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, if you would, please answer, your name is the city clerk, hold on a minute.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Rupp.
Yay.
Alderman Brooks.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Alderman Sis Trump.
Yay.
Alderman Barnes.
Yay.
All right, it is unanimous, a motion carried. Thank you, everyone. All right, last but not least, for twenty twenty-two, we have, uh, claims document.
Move, move.
A motion from Alderman Carver. Second, Alderman Rupp, thank you. No discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
All right, by voters, five to one, motion carried. We are ready for an adjournment for the year of twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
What you say.
Move, move.
Don't move.
I'll tell you what, vice mayor, make that motion to adjourn.
Um, you caught me on, on a claim document.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We get a yay on that.
We didn't come to you.
Yay on the claim document.
All right, nail the claim.
Mayor, I move that this, um, mayor and board stand adjourned until five thirty PM on Tuesday, the third day of January of twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion from the vice mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Now, the second from Alderman Barnes, all those in favor.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Mayor, please, please.